Cop Watch, policing the police every single day. Hey Charlotte County, this is Charlotte County Cop Watch. Today I did go old school because this news is so new, but fuck Kuharsky, he's a criminal. The pitch is city council member Kuharsky committed a crime and blamed it on his wife, which he did. Unbelievable. What's your baby?
No.
No.
You don't have to step that down that low. You're a dirtbag, you know that?
You're a fucking asshole dude. I am sick of your fucking shit. This guy is a Nazi from the Republican friggin' party. Always a fascist, always a Stalinist, always will be. That's why they kicked your ass out because you're an idiot. Shut up. It's redacted because they chilled my speech. At least I'm helping expose this and you're not. You are an idiot. Just go to a different country where they believe in socialism and Nazism and fascism, you fucking Nazi. You idiot. We're gonna make you go viral dipshit. That's why they got you out of office over there. Can I get in line? Yes? Right? I know what, so what, get behind you or get over there for more of you?
Get over there.
Nah, there's more people here. Probably better over this way. Did you know city council member Kuharsky committed a crime and blamed his wife?
Oh really?
He really did. He let Fox News, NBC2, and the newspaper blame his wife when it was his crime. Should he be a city council member for that?
I don't even live here, no.
Okay, there you go. Yeah, you don't want to live here. It's really messed up. It really is. But I decided I'd let you know. Do it man. Yup. City council member Kuharsky committed a crime and blamed his wife. Did you know that? He blamed his wife man, is that sad? For a crime he committed. It's not, it's redacted.
The girls are upset because they don't want Debbie to be associated with that.
I know, I'm not associated with you guys. I'm not. I'm on my own. I've been doing my own investigation.
But you actually are doing it for us.
Thank you very much, thank you.
And you're doing two things at a time.
That's correct.
That's the Kuharsky guy who's signing the abortion.
Yes, I know. When he's done, I was gonna ask him. Why, what do you say to that man? Fuck Mark Kuharsky. He's a criminal. He blamed his wife for his crime. Do you think that's a good thing?
Oh yeah, I don't know about that part of it.
Right?
I know he's supposed to cooperate.
I just want you to know that he's recording him.
Oh, he's always cooperating.
I know.
Hey, I've been helping you man, be nice man.
I am nice.
I've been helping you man, come on. There you go, alright. That's right, I know because that's legal. You're supposed to add that. City council member Kuharsky committed a crime and blamed his wife. What do you think about that? All over TV and the newspaper. Did you know city council member committed a crime blamed his wife? Is that sad? Would you be pissed if your husband blamed you for your crime?
Wouldn't we all?
Right? Yup, on the news and the newspaper blamed his wife. It's disgusting. Did you know city council member Kuharsky committed a crime blamed his wife? Is that a crime in itself? Would you be pissed at your husband? Thank you for not signing up to kill babies, I appreciate it. See, if you wouldn't have said anything, I wouldn't be doing this man, come on. For all the crap they're giving you guys, you should be recording. My god man. Did you know city council member Kuharsky committed a crime and blamed his wife? What do you think about that? He's in the newspaper and the TV blaming his wife for his own crime. Is that a manly thing or a pussy thing? It's a pussy thing, I know. This is free speech on a sidewalk man. Yeah, I know. Telling the truth about the crime. You don't? Are you serious? It's redacted man. It's redacted, it's redacted. Bye! Did you know city council member Kuharsky committed a crime blamed his wife? What do you think about that? Is that the sign of a vagina? This is the first time they went like total nature with this. I should have got the spray paint. I did not know this wide marker was gonna suck this bad.
Oh well.
Right?
It's okay.
It is okay. But was that disgusting?
He should have gotten properly charged.
Dude, exactly.
I mean, if he did it to one of the homeless people.
And if he was a man, wouldn't he admit it right away with Fox 4? But yet he wouldn't respond. Then he finally had to respond because NBC2 and the newspaper found out that he's going to APAD diversion. And do you know who hinted to go there? And look, me. So there you go, boom, busted, it's him. They finally admit it.
The big case now is Hobson on Tuesday.
Okay, why, what happened with him?
Oh, he's represented by Shirley.
Yes, 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 I do know about that. That is correct. Yeah, you're gonna be there, right?
Yeah, they charged him with, I'm gonna talk about overcharging. Dennis Denning charged him with stealing a police radio.
Yes, which was crazy. Absolutely crazy. Unbelievable.
Even Shirley sent somebody to watch.
That is correct. Oh really? So even he's saying be there?
Yeah.
Can you record for me?
No.
Damn it!
Sorry dude.
Audio?
No.
Come on, can you transcribe?
No, well, I can listen to you.
You know what's funny? Did you know there's applications that transcribe on the fly? Can you do that?
No, you can't do that.
So they want to keep the kangaroo court there, everything hidden?
Well, I guess you can ask for the transcript.
Right, that is true. Yes you can, that is true. Caught.
Alright, well, I mean, this is like really out of a sitcom movie.
It is, very, very sad. Very, very sad man. And I asked Fox 4, "Why didn't you tell the truth?" And she's saying you can get sued for slander. I'm like, "Do it like NBC2 did it."
Allegedly did it, right?
Yeah!
So it's all allegedly. And that's how Donald Trump got out of there.
Exactly.
Well, I know, somebody's bad.
Well, that's right. She could have said like NBC2 said that, you know, somebody told them. So come on! So whatever, I tried. At least she did something.
Well, the big thing that's happening now, unlike people who attend, is the school board meeting on Tuesday. About the gay, about the gay books.
Yeah!
What are we gonna do, we gonna get rid of the founding fathers?
We're gonna burn books again, man! We're gonna burn books!
Didn't we tell them two years ago? That's exactly how I got involved in this. Because of the sign ordinance?
Right.
And they said, "If you're gonna start taking that book," "Why didn't you take the book out of Gloria Steinem because it said 'Pitman' and One of the Seven Derry Works?"
That's right!
And I said, "It's only a matter of time."
I remember that.
They're gonna take this one away. And now they're getting rid of a whole class of people. They're gonna say we don't exist.
Did you see the Republicans actually did a video of them burning books?
Yeah.
They did.
And they forced all the people, the librarians in Port Gordon, to give away any gay themed book.
Whoa!
And it even has just a mention. So they got rid of Antango, which is about two male penguins taking care of a little one. I said, "You know, my son is gay."
Right.
Said, "You know, until he got the book."
Right.
Sally has two dads.
Right.
He didn't realize that gay thing was a thing, you know?
Right.
There was no role model.
Right.
And I think it's terrible. I mean, if they're gonna do that, they're gonna get rid of Jews. They're gonna get rid of, you know.
Yeah, well, you already know. They banned three speeds against Jews.
I mean, you know, they're gonna tell you where you're gonna be able to live, what you're gonna be able to do.
That is correct.
You know, they say we're crazy.
Right.
And they said, "Look, exactly from one thing it's off to the next."
You didn't give me your opinion. Are we at World War III? Israel is at full blown war.
You know, I don't know enough about that, unfortunately.
5,000 rockets. How did they not know? I thought the Jews were the best at eavesdropping.
Well, they got the Mossad man.
Yeah, they do. They're badass. That's right.
Those guys are battle tested. Remember, when you have the whole population wanting to do public service.
Right.
You have, and you know, also, look, they gotta, you know, the only, you know, the big question to ask people is, "How many Jews do you think there are in the world?"
Right.
16 million.
Right.
16 million out of 100.
Out of how billions? That is correct. That is correct.
So you gotta pick either one group, you know?
Well, because you guys are the chosen ones, right?
Hey, you know, what can I say?
Right? How do you feel like being a chosen one?
I mean, well, you know, I always felt a little impugned and deranged.
Right?
No, I'm teeming.
Right?
But I mean, you know, it's just, you know, fight for people's civil liberties. I mean, again, if they're going to get rid of even mentioning their existence of gay people.
Right.
I think, well, we should.
It's the same thing as blacks, same thing as Jews.
Well, I mean, we're gonna make slavery a way for labor training.
Right.
You know, to make people independent.
Right.
When they were freed, they had proper occupation.
That's right. By the way, lesbianism is fine. They can't stick anything. Except their tongue, which is fine.
Well, you gotta understand, my problem is that the gay thing is that there are many major churches here who want to stone people, stone my son to death.
Right.
So I take it pretty personally when they want to do that. And they went back a little bit, he should be in jail for the rest of his life.
Wow!
I remember a time before Stonewall in 74 where it was illegal in New York City and they would arrest you on the spot if you just were being gay.
Oh, no kidding?
Yeah.
Dang!
It wasn't until.
You are telling your age.
Yeah, I know, until 1998 in Germany.
Right.
People have to remember that when they freed the death camps.
Right.
The homosexuals still had to go back to jail.
Did not know that. And I was talking with a friend of mine about this. Pink Floyd has it in their music. Pin them up against the wall. Yeah.
So when they freed all the other people, the gay individuals had to go back to jail and serve out the rest of their sentence.
Wow, did not know that.
It wasn't until 1998 that they repealed the homosexual law.
Right.
Remember what we did to Alan Turing in Britain? In Britain it was against the law until the 60s.
Oh my god. Oh my god, did not know that.
Yeah, I mean, it just, you know, so.
Right.
Let's look at where it is.
Right. Why, how's the turnout gonna be on Tuesday for the school thing? Have you heard?
I don't know, but I think, you know, it has a lot of social media with it. They did a nice job in the local paper.
Yup, yup.
Elaine's always on the ball there.
That's correct. Hey, by the way, why did Frank do Kuharsky and not Elaine? That was weird.
You know, it's luck of the draw, you know?
Alright.
Who's closer.
Right.
Who's busy with something.
Right, got it.
But boy, Elaine really is after that pummel, after the sheriff.
Good!
For all the deaths that happened in the jail. The person who had the pleasure of their.
That's right.
Occupation. So what's it like being on the top shelf there of the 64 man?
Uh, it's not good. There's no bar. You could literally roll off the bed and die. Now they got the chain up so you can't jump off anymore. But did you see with the Sarasota article how out of control it is? They got 150 people sleeping on the floor.
And our jail's empty. So it's half full.
But you know and I know, it's, they're already, it's policing for profit. It's state and federal freaking giving money for this crap dude. It's motivating them. It's disgusting.
That and asset forfeiture, which several, that auditor, Long Island Audit.
Yes.
Exposing the guy who went from a low detective.
Psycho. That's right.
To the head of the police department.
That is correct.
Because he did so much asset forfeiture, they suspended everybody.
Unbelievable man. Unbelievable.
With overtime and whatnot.
Correct.
And that's all from the back there. People just driving in there on hundreds of thousands, $1,500 on them or, you know.
Did you read that story, what they were doing in Detroit? They were friggin' impounding people's cars for eight months to a year. They had to sue them just to get their cars back and stop it.
Yeah, because the Supreme Court said that you can't have.
Okay, here's Kuharsky. Okay, what do you think about Kuharsky blaming his wife for his crime? What do you think? You agree with that? You're not embarrassed? Hello? Okay, they don't want to answer.
Alright dude.
Alright man, good to see you. Let me know how Tuesday goes. I gotta work man.
Alright, I know. You gotta make hay when the sun shines.
That is correct, yes. Why, can I teach you how to do the secret cellphone thing?
No.
Ah, damn it! It's only a court administration order. What would they do to you?
I talked to everybody.
Alright, alright, alright.
I love y'all.
Alright. Did you know city council member Kuharsky committed a crime and blamed his wife? Do you think that's manly of him or pussy of him?
What did he do?
He committed a crime and blamed his wife. You didn't see that on the newspaper and TV? Alright, yup, it was all over the place man, very, very sad.
Is that your opponent?
Uh, it is. It is. But they said I'm not with them. I'm by myself.
They don't want negative.
Yeah, how dare we do that? That's right! Yup, do not vote Kuharsky, he's a bad man. He's our city council member, he's a criminal. Blamed his wife for his crime. Is that disgusting?
I don't know, I never met his wife.
Right. He did it in TV and the paper. Would you kick his ass if he did that to you? Say yes. But he would never do that to you, right? Cause he's forward grown. He knows how to treat a woman. So you know why Kuharsky doesn't know how to treat a woman? He's not forward grown. See, right? There you go man. That's right. So, don't vote Kuharsky. You have a good day.
You too.
City council member Kuharsky blamed his wife for his crime. Do you think that's a manly thing he did or a vagina thing? Say a vagina thing. Would you kick her husband's ass if he did that? Thank you for not signing up to kill babies, I appreciate it. City council member Kuharsky blamed his wife for his crime. What do you think about that? Is that a manly thing or a vagina thing? Thank you for not signing up to kill babies, I appreciate it. Now ignore them for killing babies. City council member Kuharsky blamed his wife for a crime. What do you think about that? Is that sad? Is that a manly thing or a vagina thing? That's a vagina thing. City council member Kuharsky committed a crime blamed his wife. What do you think about that? Is that a manly thing or vagina thing? Miss, would you kick your husband's ass if he did that? Say yes. City council member Kuharsky blamed his wife for a crime. What do you guys think about that? Is that a manly thing? That's not a manly thing, that's a vagina thing, right? Miss, would you kick your husband's ass if he blamed you for a crime? It's pretty sad though, right? That is. I'm not, it's redacted. It's not. It's, how do you say that? Fuck, I don't know how to say it. No, it's. No, they can't see it, it's Xed out. It's true, it is. It really is. I took a picture just to make sure I wasn't imagining it. I think him blaming his wife is worse than a bad word. City council member Kuharsky blamed his wife for a crime. Do you think that's a manly thing or a vagina thing? Oh, okay, that's good. Yeah, do not live here, it's really messed up man. And you guys already know, you got enough problems up there.
Right.
Yes. That's right. City council member Kuharsky blamed his wife for a crime. What do you think? Is that a manly thing or vagina thing? That's a vagina thing. Do not vote for Kuharsky blamed his wife for a crime. City council member Kuharsky blamed his wife for his crime. Do you think that's a manly thing or vagina thing? I think that's a vagina thing. It's a vagina thing.
What'd he do?
He committed a crime, he bent over the other side's sign and broke it and then blamed his wife for it in the press and TV. Is that sad? Do not vote Kuharsky. Thank you.
Tell my husband he missed him.
Alright, yes, tell him that. Thank you, see they agree. City council member Kuharsky blamed his wife for his crime. Do you think that's a manly thing or vagina thing? Is that better than saying the P word?
Was Obama born in the United States?
Uh, I do believe it probably was another state. Also, did you see the headline on Drudgery Report? Are we at the end times? Israel is at full blown war man.
Yeah.
Full blown. How did they not know that was coming man? Yes, the other side is the other one.
It's like 50 dead.
Just for my Christian friends.
Right, there you go. Right?
Wait, wait, what were you asking about Obama on the report?
Oh, I told my brother-in-law Obama was born in Kenya. He called me racist.
Oh my god.
Maybe you might know about Obama.
That's racist that he said you're racist.
But he's half white, so how can?
Right?
Which part is racist?
Exactly, good point.
Yeah.
What does this mean?
Okay, you guys didn't hear, it was in the newspaper and the TV. Kuharsky committed a crime, he's on our city council. And he did damage and he blamed his wife for it on TV and the newspaper. What would you do to your husband if he blamed you for his crime? Would you kick his ass? What does the Bible say about that? Tarn feather?
Eye for eye.
Stocks? Ooh, eye for eye, there you go.
Oh, Jesus said.
Oh, forgiveness? Okay, slap him and then forgive him? Right?
I like the eye for eye.
Yeah, say a prayer for her wife, his wife man. I can't believe he did that. In the newspaper and TV, is that sad?
So what is going on with all the voting?
What is the what?
Like all the voting, like what are we doing about that?
Uh, yeah, so Debbie Lux is running, I'm not with them. They said I have to disown her. I'm by myself, even though I helped investigate all this. Uh, but, you know, I had an idea. Do you think this would be good or bad? If I take one of my abortion signs, stand over there and record everybody that wants to kill a baby?
Wait, this is what you should be fighting for on this side.
We gotta do this, this is really important right now.
I didn't even know, oh, you're right.
They are signing up for killing babies right there.
Yeah, we should address that.
Yes! Get the church out. Start recording everybody that believes in killing a baby.
They know they harvest the organs of the baby.
Yes, they are, yeah, they're using.
You know they inject it into the people?
Soiling green buddy, it's here, right? It is sad. So what do you think of that idea? Would that be brutal? And then you gotta post it, you gotta do a Facebook, you gotta post that? You gotta do YouTube, TikTok? Let the people know that these people do not care about life, correct? I mean, would you, anybody that signs up for that, would you want, would you want them to touch your baby?
No.
No. You're a fucking asshole dude. I am sick of your fucking shit. This guy is a Nazi from the Republican friggin' party. Always a fascist, always a Stalinist, always will be. That's why they kicked your ass out because you're an idiot. Shut up. It's redacted because they chilled my speech. At least I'm helping expose this and you're not. You are an idiot. Just go to a different country where they believe in socialism and Nazism and fascism, you fucking Nazi. You idiot. We're gonna make you go viral dipshit. That's why they got you out of office over there.
Oh, that's what we were wondering, do you have a YouTube channel? Where does this go?
So I've been severely shadow banned because of what I do. I literally have the documents. The government is striking my stuff, but do you know it's illegal?
Yeah, you must be.
So, yeah, but just look for Charlotte County Cop Watch on Facebook, on YouTube, and TikTok.
Oh yeah, I'm a TikToker.
Yeah.
Wait, Charlotte County what?
Charlotte County Cop Watch. And some of it might be blocked. They're literally blocking my channel that's 10 years ago.
This is your channel?
Okay, one of them, correct, there you go.
Oh, one of them.
There you go.
Alright, I gotcha.
Got it, yeah. But remember that idea, give that idea to church over there. Let's record everybody that believes in killing a human being. Don't you think everybody should know that?
Up until the day of birth.
That's correct, very, very soon.
I understand God has a birth for everyone.
Thank you. Yeah, and remember, the swearing I just did is better than the knife that he told me to get. Hey, can you get your own stand and have them sign a piece of paper, "We Believe in Life"?
I know, that would be nice.
That would be good. City council member Kuharsky blamed his wife for his crime. Do you think that's a manly thing or vagina thing? If your husband blamed you of a crime on TV and the newspaper, would you kick his ass? Thank you, very good. Thank you for being American. Do not vote Kuharsky. He really did it. You have a good day. Somebody's gotta say it man. That is so low what he did, it's not even funny. City council member Kuharsky blamed his wife for his crime. Do you think that's a manly thing or vagina thing? Kuharsky committed a crime and blamed it on his wife on the newspaper and TV. Do you think that's a manly thing or a pussy thing? I think it's a pussy thing. City council member Kuharsky blamed his wife for a crime. What do you think about that? Kuharsky blamed his wife for his crime in the newspaper and on TV. Did you see any of that? He did, is that sad? It is sad. He covered his name with Marcy's Law. And then they wouldn't give me the documents forever, they gave them to somebody else. It's just sad man. It is very, very sad. Yes, the government and the police were covering for Mark. That is sad. And we're at war in Israel. What do you think? Are we at World War III?
Very biblical, right?
Literally, 5,000 rockets already? Unbelievable. All my tinfoil hat people tell me October's the time. What do you think?
I don't know, you know, they gave him all that money to Iran, what do you expect, right?
That is true too.
They don't get that, they don't go and buy those rockets for free.
That is true, that's a very good, you know, I'm shocked that Israel didn't know about it because you know they're the best at surveillance. I'm shocked they didn't know.
Yeah, it's amazing.
It is, it is, unbelievable. Right, correct. It's very, very, did you see they were doing paragliders over the wall there? And they're shooting from the paraglider. Unbelievable. There's already videos out, yeah, it's crazy man. That is correct. By the way, the ex-leader of the Republican Party was just here yelling at me because I'm doing this. And I said, "That's why they voted you out", correct? What's that guy's name? Yeah, alright, it was the head Republican Nazi, I forget his name. Everybody hated him, they voted him out. Yeah, he was just here yelling at me. Very sad. Alright, there you go, yes, it is a mess. You are correct. Right? Yes they are, you are correct. Absolutely. Right? Yeah, and they don't like me because, yes, I'm doing this. Yes, I am trying. Somebody's gotta be the town crier, right? That's right. Our newspaper won't tell the truth, right? It's very sad. It is. That's why I'm here. Thank you. I gotta get my cap. Did you hear that city council member Kuharsky blamed his wife for his crime?
That's crazy.
Is that, would you kick his ass if he did that to you?
Yeah.
Thank you very much. Thank you for being a woman.
Abortion sucks.
What, thank you. Can you tell them that over there? Get it on video.
Good luck.
Thank you. Do not vote Kuharsky. City member Kuharsky, please tell me you recorded that.
She failed. She tried to...
Oh, come on, man!
Oh, should I?
Yes, you should get one of these. This is transcend, man.
I know. God's watching.
A monkey can do this. One button.
Did you hear anything?
I missed it. How good was it?
It was good, but she gave me some studying to do.
What? That killing a baby's good? That's insane.
She gave me a Bible verse to back it up. So I just wanna read the context of... Because it's like the third time I heard this Bible verse, so I wanna look into it so I know what it says.
Really? The Bible backs up abortion? Wow! They're talking about the satanic Bible, okay? Not the real Bible, alright?
Alright, God bless you.
Alright, you have a good day.
Alright. And maybe like let, like, love flow out, not so much cursing?
I know, but it's better than getting the knife. But yeah, that guy that came up, that's why they voted him out, man. He is a piece of trash.
I was in shock.
I know, I know. Well, I'm like Moses said. I... Why are you picking me? I can't even speak. And I have a problem with the bad words.
That's what my dad says. Like, well, somebody's gotta get down there.
That's right. There you go.
Thank you.
Alright, you have a good day. Yep. City council member Koharski blamed his wife for his crime. Is that a manly thing or vagina thing? That's a vagina thing. Oh, okay. That fucking sucks, man. I hate fucking free speech. Fucking, man, they should fucking put me at... Burn me at the stake. Put me in a cross like Jesus, who fought tyranny. Apparently, you're not a Christian. God killed everybody on the earth except for one family, man. Are you guys Satanist or communist? I'm not sure. City council member Koharski blamed his wife for his crime. Is that a manly thing or vagina thing? Do not vote Koharski. Bad man. It's very sad. Our council member. Uh, yes. He literally... Okay, that's good. This place is really messed up, except for the farmer's market. And even that's messed up. Free speech is dead there, by the way. If you do any kind of free speech in a farmer's market, the guy will kick you out, trespass you. Yeah, apparently we're in Nazi Germany now. Green light. There you go. Have a nice day. City council member Koharski blamed his wife for his crime. Is that a manly thing or vagina thing? Miss, if your husband did that to you, would you kick his ass? Right? What's that? He's our city council member and he committed a crime and literally the newspaper and TV did a story on it and he blamed it on his wife. Is that somebody you wanna vote for?
Well, I can't vote here anyway.
Okay, yeah, you don't wanna live here. It's really messed up, man. Alright, you have a good day.
Alright, you too.
Yep. Council member Koharski blamed his crime on his wife. Is that a manly thing or vagina thing?
That's a vagina thing.
That's a vagina thing. Thank you very much. That's the right answer. I hope you'd kick your husband's ass if he did that to you. City council member Koharski blamed his crime on his wife. Is that a manly thing or vagina thing? That's a vagina thing. You should kick your husband's ass if he did that to you. Don't vote Koharski. Do not vote for Koharski. Yes, he blamed his crime on his wife. Did you hear about that?
Uh-uh, we're just new here.
Yeah. Oh, you live here now? Aw, man. Right. Yeah, he's on our city council. It's really sad. Yep. Right? Also, if you do live here, you gotta be careful of your dog's poop because they will trespass you.
Oh, really?
Literally, a lady up in PGI let her dog poop on the swale and they trespassed her.
Even if you pick it up?
Even if you pick it up. Right? Yeah, poop to go is really messed up. Be careful. You're welcome.
I did. I've been here before, but we're just really new to the living here, the politics, the...